to order. I'm joined by Vice Chair John Fallon, members Anthea Brady, Bill McGonigal, Mike Bentencourt, and Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We don't have as packed an agenda as some nights, but we will start off with acceptance of donations and move through our agenda we expect to go through in sequence this evening.
All right, I believe that we accept with gratitude a donation of $500 from Edward and Dorothy Butler towards a memorial for John Sullivan.
All those in favor?
I have some questions, actually.
Oh, let's discuss.
Because I've seen this now on two agendas in a row. Where are we building a memorial for John Sullivan?
It's actually mostly built.
Oh, really?
It's right out between Town Hall and Mill Pond. And I was actually going to mention the dedication is October 23rd at 10:00 a.m.
Yes. It's a bench and some flowers right beyond the Sister City placard that's there. It's right adjacent to that.
And then I already went through the whole council and name process and everything?
There's no, it's not like an area, like naming the town common. It's just a small, kind of, like you said, a bench.
It's a bench with his name on it.
It's just a small group of residents that have been organizing it, and when funding comes, we have to...
Yeah, usually it takes, usually there's so much effort to get anything done. I was surprised that, like, oh, it's already here.
Oh, it's taken...
It's been going on for...
It's been going on for years.
Couple of years.
That answers...
Don't worry, it's taking the requisite... We don't want to just, you know, set expectations.
Well, then, good on Edward and Dorothy Butler for jumping in at the end of the process.
Well, I just got another check from Cummings Board.
Oh, really?
Jim Flor.
Now I know. Thank you much.
Okay. Any other discussion? I know we had a motion, a second, so I can call the vote. Are we good, Bill?
Yeah.
All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I vote yes. Okay.
All right, I move that we accept gratitude, an EEC stabilization grant of $8,166.66 for the Recreation Department Kid Connection RAP EEC childcare license for the month of September, for months of September and October.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we accept an in-kind donation of $9,999.60 from FRS Roofing to the Town of Winchester to replace the Ginfield Bath House roof.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you for those donations. Beth, your report.
Sure, thank you. I have a few updates. First up, I wanted to note that there are public flu clinics, as well as COVID vaccination clinics, ongoing through our Health Department. The next public flu clinics will be held on October 16th, October 21st, and November 4th. You can register for those clinics online. And the COVID vaccination clinic will be held on November 6th from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Jank Center. That is a Pfizer vaccine, and you can register for that online as well.
So I know I should know the answer to this, but I'm assuming those are all no charge or a charge?
So you...
Bill insurance.
Yeah, you bill insurance. Or you can pay, there's an option to pay the vaccine.
Thank you.
November election, obviously, is November 5th, and our Town Clerk's office is well underway. Early voting will start on Saturday, October 19th, so this Saturday, and will continue through, let me turn the page here, through November 1st. So Monday through Friday, as well as Saturday's early voting here at Town Hall. The last date of registered to vote is October 26th. Right after the election, we'll start town meeting. So Fall Town Meeting starts on Thursday, November 7th, and the Town Manager's public hearing for town meeting articles not otherwise subject to a hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, October 30th at 6:00 p.m. via Zoom. I have a couple of good pieces, pieces of good news related to grants the town has received. First, we were just recently notified that we received a million-dollar grant through the Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs Dam and Seawall Program to go towards the South Reservoir Dam project. We did, Town Meeting did approve borrowing for that project, the amount of $6 million. So we will be able to use that grant to offset the cost of the borrowing for that project. And then we just received notification today that we received a grant from the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant in the amount of $75,000 to go towards the replacement of a portion of the windows at the Mystic School. So that's good news for that building as well as we try to improve the heating condition there. And then finally, I just have a couple capital construction updates. Eversource has mostly completed their work on Cross Street. The town is finishing up our portion of the traffic calming and pedestrian improvements out there. McDonald and Leonard Field Playground bit was open, and we'll talk about that during the ARPO session of tonight's meeting. Winchester High School Drainage at work is actually, they're physically finishing that work over the long weekend, and I think it was going into the early part of this week. Library roof immediate repairs, that work is substantially complete, and the parking lot has been opened, backed up behind us. And the Leonard Field Tennis Court work is also substantially complete. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
And Beth, I noted in your report, we have hazardous waste sort of drop-off days. I wonder if that's something that, you know, if we can throw it in the lobby, you know, downtown, all around the building where we have COVID clinics, and those dates are recurring, they're every month, so they're always in your report, but if people wanted to sort of look, you know, a year at a glance or a calendar, when could I go to Lexington? I think that might be good to just throw up some flyers around.
Yeah. So I think they actually take a break over the winter.
That would make sense. Yep.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure why this thing makes me giggle every time, but here it goes. Those signs that we're going to go around town, I think there's three of them?
No, that wasn't awarded, the Sufa sign.
Never...
Right, it wasn't awarded.
Yeah, the Chamber of Commerce applied for a travel and tourism grant and did not receive that grant.
Oh. No, because I was just thinking, that's a good place to put that.
Perfect place.
Yes.
It was actually a serious purpose to my question.
Okay.
Right.
The tennis court looks nice.
Don't take a project for your job, Sam.
The tennis courts look nice?
The tennis courts look nice.
Great. And we're going to hopefully make repairs to the rest of the equipment. This is, these microphones are weird tonight, but, okay. Any other questions for Beth on that report?
I'll just add that the, sometime this morning or early afternoon, the Forest Street pedestrian island was marked off. So everyone is very excited that that's truly going to happen.
I think they're going to leave it with the barrels for a few days to kind of see how it flows, but yeah, yep.
It's looking better.
It does. It looks good. Yep.
I know I'm driving slower on Cross Street now, but the, the lane is narrower, and the parking lanes being better established.
Yep. I think it's a good, good result.
Yes, agreed. Okay. Is anybody here for public comment? Seeing none. Okay. The Comptroller's report was in our packet this evening. She's not here. She's trying to get back from vacation. But if you have any questions, you can reach out to Stacy directly or let me know, and I'm happy to reach out to her. But it looks like revenue and expenses are generally in track where they should be at this point in the fiscal year. We don't have any public hearing this evening, so before we get to appointments to field management, I was going to give Mr. Bentencourt a chance to put in a plug for information sessions. Go ahead.
Thanks, Michelle. Just a reminder, there are two info sessions on ballot question number six for the Community Preservation Act. One tomorrow at the Jank Center at 2:30 and one at 6:30 at Wincam. And that will be streamed live and recorded at Wincam and will be played as well. But, you know, folks can go there in person and ask questions. So there'll be a short presentation and then questions, and it is a, just a general info session for both locations. So, and as many people already know, there are five state ballot questions on November 5th, and we have, the number six one is our, is our local one. So that's what these info sessions are geared towards, just answering questions for people and providing information.
And you're hard up against a flu clinic tomorrow at Janks as well?
Yes.
Because I'm signed up for 3:45.
Oh, awesome. Yes, no, it's, it's, it's always a...
Busy day.
A busy day over at the Janks. So it's, they are, they are packed with activities, and so it was actually not terribly easy to get in there. So it was great that they accommodated us. We appreciate it.
Yeah, maybe you have a captive audience, too, which is good. Come for the flu shot, you know, come for the presentation, stay for the flu shot, or vice versa.
Yeah, we, yeah, we could just roam around from person.
The six o'clock people, we send them to Wincam. Like, just take a left.
I've created a negative association with the kids at Shattuck.
Those voters are across the street, isn't that?
Not yet. Not until next week.
19th, I think 19th is the start of early voting, is that correct?
Yeah, Saturday, yeah.
Only so many one-stop shopping things we can pull off, Bill. Voting's not, not one more.
The right understanding, the CPA question is on the opposite side of the page.
It's, it's on the back.
The backside of the ballot.
Yep. So you got to flip over the ballot and...
On the ballots that are down at the Town Clerk's office, right on the corner there, it's on the same page, it's not flipped over. It's at the very bottom, I just don't know if there was enough room to fit it.
Okay, I know, I spoke with...
The early ballot and absentee ballots have it on, it's, it's all on the same page. You just have to look at it a second.
Okay. So I know Mary Ellen had reached out to me just to let us know, and she had sent out, you know, information to folks, just saying, like, it's, it's on the back, so flip it over. And I know that she was going to direct...
Yeah, all the questions are on the back.
Yeah.
Oh, all six questions are on the back together?
Yes.
I understood it like you did.
I understood that it was...
One, two, three, four, five.
Five.
Except all the questions from the back. Well, that's good to know for our viewers watching at home. Good.
If that didn't confuse them anymore.
All the questions are on one side, on the back.
Six is the local one.
There you go.
Preservation Act.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, there were questions for people that got the state ballot information guide and saying, I didn't see question six, right? So that's what, that's why, because it's not a state ballot question, it is a local ballot question. So our info sessions are in person, they are not, not as part of that guide. So that's why I wanted to clarify that. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. Sure. Okay. And so we're getting into our business agenda. The first item of business is a failed management committee interview and appointment of Ms. Lauren Herman. If you could come on up. And while we know you, for the record, just state your name and where you live, and as these go, your interest in serving on the committee, anything else you want to tell us about yourself, and take it away.
Hi, Lauren Herman, 10 Gin Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. The Field Management Committee is important to me because I'm a lifelong athlete, and as a child, I was involved with organized sports very early on. I am thankful for the opportunities that that provided me, the opportunities that having quality sports and recreation facilities offered.
Okay. And have you had a chance to attend some field management meetings to understand what you're getting yourself into so far?
I did, yes. I attended one meeting so far.
Okay. You haven't become like, you know, the next chair, so that's good, you haven't been appointed yet. Any questions for Lauren, who we see doing Friends of Rec, but any questions from the group?
Yeah, I have a question, and I really hope you can prove me wrong. Because the last time you were here, you were here with the Friends of Recreation, and you were essentially lobbying for funds to improve the fields, which is great, but you were here in the lobbying role, and now you're looking for a position on a committee, which would also be responsible for managing the same sort of resources. And off the bat, to me, it looks like that could be a conflict, where if you have one role where you're lobbying and pushing, and you have one role in the government where you're making those decisions that you'd be lobbying for in your other role. Prove me wrong, please, because you're such a wonderful person and so hardworking, but I have to ask that question.
Sure. I think that's a great, great question. It's a valid one, and I appreciate it, and I thought a lot about it, and as I've, you know, filled out the application and obviously when I took over the lead on the Friends organization, I would not call what we were doing previously lobbying per se. I like to say that we want to speak to the right people who can help support our mission, which is to support recreational opportunities for all residents in Winchester. Now, that mission obviously overlaps with the field management committee, and I'm very, I'm communicating frequently with the rec department as we are partners with the Kid Connection Preschool, and I would just say that the missions definitely overlap, and it is helpful to have someone in both roles who is speaking to different, you know, networks of people that are different with the different positions. I don't see it as being a conflict of interest so much as it is a synergy, if you will.
That is an amazing answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just sort of add, as I'm the select board's member of the Fields Committee, and the makeup of that committee is very much members, both sort of town staff members as well as volunteer members, who tend to be on that committee because of sort of specific relation and interests with what's happening with the fields and, you know, have deep understanding of how the fields are, are used and accessed, and who's using them, and what the, what the needs are. So synergy is a very nice word to sort of describe what that motivation that Lauren has.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just to say thank you, Lauren, for applying. I do think that it is, you know, really essential to have multiple roles where, you know, you're with your role at the Friends of Rec, 501(c)(3), and field management committee to see what the need is and be able to advocate for it. I think a lot of the members, if not all of them, that are non-staff on the field management committee are connected to other groups or organizations more formally, and so it makes sense, and it, you know, to your point, it's, it's really complementary and synergistic to have those roles be dual in a way, and so you can talk about specific things and advocate for them in front of us or in front of Town Meeting or other opportunities. So thank you, appreciate it, and certain support for your application.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, anything?
No, just to say thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Appreciate your applying, so, okay.
All right. The move that we appoint Lauren Herman to the Field Management Committee with the term to expire on July first, 2027.
Second.
All the, any additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I hope yes. Welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Get to work.
Thank you.
And if you were here for the Newtown Field Turf presentation, we will not be having it this evening, so some of the members have to deal with some personal items, so they are going to come in on the 28th is the plan. For the board, it is in our packet, maybe we'll persist it for the packet on the 28th, but the request is to make some improvements to Field C at Newtown Field. They met with the Fields Management Committee, there's a memo in our packet about that as well. We've not had a chance yet to see some of the questions that field management brought forward around, you know, notifying neighbors and, you know, appropriate amount of funding for maintenance and replacement. I think we'll have a chance to ask those questions on the 28th, but we don't have that presentation, or at least the people to give it this evening, so we're going to move right along, unless people have questions on what they've seen, or we want to sort of tee up questions for two weeks from now.
My only question is, are they asking for some specific action from us, or is this kind of just, there's a term you love to use, kind of circulate the idea of what's going on. Socialize the idea.
Socialize the idea, yeah. I think they're looking for permission to make those improvements if they fund them, so that's, you know, upgrading and making changes to a town resource and a town-owned asset, and the conservation commissioner would need to weigh in, but yes, it would be, you know, changing the use and giving them permission to change the use, and potentially questions about who's going to maintain, you know, the conditions of the fields, so...
If they could maybe just articulate that and whatever they come forward with, that would be helpful, because I didn't see it directly asked.
I think you have to sort of infer that out of the various sort of hearings and steps, but that's a fair point.
Yeah, I'd rather not infer, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's, as Michelle said, it's a town-owned asset, so they would need your, our select board permission to move forward with those improvements.
We can pass that along. Any other questions that we'd like to have answered when they're in in two weeks?
More of a Stacy question, you know, assuming they have some kind of capital seeking fund to replace the field, do we have the ability to audit that or check that out, or because you know, we just take it word in the tin, just later, the things will...
Yeah, I mean, I think it would have to be, my thought is like, maybe we do like a donation, Stacy sets up like a donation account, and then every year, whatever the frequency, there's funds, you know, that are put into it that would go towards it, but that's a good question.
Yeah, just ask them before the next meeting, then we can just present that to them and say, see if that's acceptable.
Yep. And visibility into it as well, right? That audible, visible to us, yes. So I think questions, you know, when they come to Bill, I think not just to the permission is, can we make these things, but also, you know, where that field is situated, access to make the improvements, I mean, does it impact other fields? Would you restore Field B to its current condition if it gets torn up to making improvements to Field C? And that's, we'd have to know all of those things before we grant permission and make sure we understand what we're getting back, and the untouched portions that will probably be touched if they are putting equipment in or dragging things across. So I think that's, that's not so clear in the presentation, but maybe they have an answer for that too. Okay. Any other questions? We want to make sure we get back to them. Okay. Then we'll move along to another topic, the MBTA's request to take eight parking spaces on Waterfield over the course of, from November second and third through December 21st and 22nd, four spaces on the town common side of the street, and then spaces underneath the train trestle, kind of opposite Black Horse Tavern. I got a couple of emails today from some downtown businesses, I don't know if anybody else has heard from folks. We, I guess a little history on this, and Beth can certainly chime in, we got a tour of the, the station right before it opened, and I think the request came into Matt maybe that day or the day before. And we were talking with Nathan, this is not Nathan, right? This is commuter rail maintenance, the entire Lowell Line is going to be bust, so it's not this center, but we said, you know, what about Larois Way Road, where you have the entire block? What about having the bus pull in at one end or the other? What about down here on the side of the station where you, you know, you have equipment laying down now? That really wasn't Nathan's space. So then Matt followed up, and Bob followed up, and Beth followed up with the tea on other options, other considerations, could you clear the space of Larois Way and just move your things? The answer was no. We also asked them to come to our meeting tonight, and on Friday, they said they wouldn't be coming. Today, we asked for, okay, if you're not here, can we understand, it's been open for two weekends, so if the train has stopped and people have gone on or disembarked, how many people have accessed it from the center? We don't have that data. So that's what we have. We don't know how many people are impacted because they don't do counts, says the response we got about two o'clock this afternoon, and I think the key piece is, if we don't grant the parking spaces, the buses won't stop on Waterfield, but the buses will stop on, at the Wedgmere Station, and the buses will go to West Medford, and you will be able to go into Boston or leave because there are no trains coming through, it's buses. So that's the background. Beth, I don't want to add more. We did ask for different designs, different considerations, more detail. We don't, we have, what we have is what's in your packet, and we don't have any passenger info for the month of October.
So I think the board has two options, you can approve the use of the eight spaces on those weekends in November and December on Waterfield, or we can say that, you know, we don't want to have those spaces, and if that's the case, then they would skip over the Winchester Center Station with the bus service on those weekends, and people would be able to load and disembark at Wedgmere instead.
Which is what we've been living with for the last two years.
Correct.
But Sunday's really not an issue. Give up the four spaces on Sunday, right? So now you're just talking about give up the four spaces on Saturday.
That's eight total.
Right?
Well, I think, again, I, you know, I would rely on the businesses downtown to kind of, over the holiday season, are they, do they have, you know, more businesses for holiday parties on Sunday or that type of thing? I'm not sure, but I don't, Michelle, maybe you had heard from a few businesses today?
I did hear from a few businesses. I think kind of the companion piece to Bill's point, we've been living with, you know, train transit from Wedgmere for two years. I think the businesses have been dealing with the consequences of not having parking on Larois Way, on Waterfield, and other places, and I think the frequency with which the buses would come through on a Saturday or Sunday, you know, they might come through every 90 minutes, but we're still losing four spaces on two sides of the street. You know, I'm not sure if like Santa's coming or we have menorah lightings on a weekend, but it's, you wouldn't be able to just be there even to run to the common to, to do a thing, because in theory, that would be dedicated to the T for whenever the bus comes by. So it's a lot to tie up for an infrequent, I think. We don't know how many people, but certainly an infrequent access.
Yes.
I mean, I'm looking at this picture in our packet, right? This picture in our packet is from before September 30th, so there's a lot of parking spaces that have been recovered since then, right, all along. The Abbeville Lot and the Waterfield Lot is repaved with parking, so I don't know, I mean, it's a, if we took away eight spaces in September, I think that's a little bit different than it's a month later, we take away eight spaces, and all of the outdoor dining is, is coming down, or we're, it seems like it's sort of neutral in terms of what we had, you know, weekends in August, September compared to what we'll have in November. So, you know, having those numbers would be really helpful to know if people are actually taking the train on the weekend, and if, you know, if there are, I mean, I assume there's Celtics games, there's Bruins games that people might take the bus down for that's conveniently through Winchester Center. So I think like particularly looking at this picture, and like we, we just got a lot of parking spaces back.
Yeah, I think I would just, I haven't heard myself directly from any businesses, but I did talk to the executive director of the chamber today, and certainly there's a concern from the businesses' side in general about loss of space during the holiday season, so I agree that, you know, we have gained some of those spaces, but I think you would hear from the businesses that those spaces, particularly in the Abbeville Lot, are not as well-used by consumers as probably the on-street spaces in the, right on Waterfield.
Yeah, and as things get colder and the weather gets worse, I feel that people are less likely to walk or bike, like, and more likely to drive downtown, and some of these are pretty prime spots, particularly under the, under the railway. I always try and park there because it's protected, and...
Except for birds.
Yeah.
Back to birds.
And I'm also skeptical that we necessarily get the spots back on December 22nd, because all these projects just go longer than we ever expect them to, and I don't want to be giving up spots into perpetuity, you know, during a holiday season and everything else. And given that we've lived without Winchester Center for so long, given that Wedgmere is a very easy trip away with plenty of parking for anybody who needs to use a stop there, given that we're only talking about weekend use, when T ridership is at its lowest point, but people running downtown for errands in our local community is probably at its highest, I'm very hesitant to give up these parking spots.
Is this a request, or in order to just...
Yes.
But I mean, if we say no...
If we say no, that the bus will not stop at the center, it will go to Wedgmere.
Right, okay.
It does not, it doesn't impact the Winchester Center project, right? Because it's Lowell Line maintenance, the entire train line is going bus, so it has nothing to do with what's happening with elevators and construction schedules, right? They just wouldn't stop there. They would just probably say, the bus does not stop at Winchester Center on these weekends, you can access it at Wedgmere. Yes.
That's what I mean, it's not like we could suggest another option here, what they're proposing is...
We have tried, yes.
Yes, right, but at this point, it's yes or no.
Correct. This is the plan, we're not giving any other option.
Yeah.
Right. Approve or deny this? That's right. I'm kind of with Bill, I'm not inclined to give up spaces, but John, I don't know what you think.
No, I agree. I mean, we're used to it, and as Bill points out, I'm over at that Wedgmere Station enough on Bacon Street, there's just tons of parking there, so I don't think it's going to be a huge inconvenience for anybody who's actually going to take the bus into Boston to go to like a Celtics game. I think they'll probably drive, not wait for the bus.
I think it's unfortunate that the trains aren't running during that season, you know, that it is bus service, because there are, you know, games and things and, you know, holiday events, but it's bus service regardless of whether you pick it up here, or at Wedgmere, or at West Medford. Okay.
Yeah, I think too, I mean, particularly those spaces have been, you know, have heavily impacted those businesses, and will, when the civil construction project, you know, starts, you know, that will again impact those businesses. I mean, there's going to be no breather there, so it'll, it'll probably feel much worse for them to then, and for half the time, or most of the time, it's, you know, there's not going to be a bus there.
Correct.
Right? So...
Yeah, the frequency...
Because there are going to be dead spaces for 90% of the day, you know?
Yes.
We've got a lot of new businesses opening up downtown, between Karma, Q Robin, The Thai Place, Maison France, is that the...
Maison Nouvelle.
Nouvelle Maison.
Nouvelle Maison.
Ribbon Cutting, Last Friday Coral and something, and a children's clothing store and on Waterfield Place, right along the river, yeah.
I would really hate to dampen the momentum of any of those new businesses drawing people downtown, so.
Okay.
I mean, like, no one's going to take the, the bus to Winchester Center to go shopping. I mean, like, that's the, I think it seems like people are fairly confident, that's not a mode of transportation for someone who's going to poke around in the stores in Winchester Center, because you're not going to go to Wedgmere and then come back up to the center and do something, you're just going to like...
Having that, understanding that ridership number would have been helpful to answer that question, like, who disembarked here on a Saturday afternoon would be great, but the answer, it wasn't just, we don't have that today, it's, we don't collect that information, we will not be able to give you that information, so...
But the people disembarking are probably local residents.
Sure, could be a visitor, but we don't, we don't, we won't have it. So officially, Beth, the best way to, you know, do we need to take a vote to reject it, or we just, we don't take any vote to approve it, right? And we can just say it did not pass? What's the best way to sort of, for the record?
I think I would take a vote, just...
To reject it?
Yeah.
How we want to structure that motion, Mr. Fallon?
Well, I...
We can all just fail it?
I move that...
We can move to approve and...
We decline the offer?
Yeah.
Respectfully decline the offer from the MBTA?
I would just say you deny the use of the eight public on-street parking spaces on Waterfield Road.
I move that we deny the MBTA's use of eight pocket spaces on Waterfield Road.
Any additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anthea?
Aye.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Can be a no, that's all good too. Okay. We can let them know. And, you know, I thought about if we needed to debate it on the 28th, it doesn't really change the decision. I don't know the two weeks out. If we somehow get, we won't get ridership information. And I think telling the T to not plan for this is probably better to know sooner than later.
I think if you hear on November 4th, a public outrage that there's no service in Winchester, there's a month and a half left of this shuttle bus service, you can always change your minds at some point during this if, if we hear public feedback that.
I think it will speed up people's commutes if they're coming from the end of the line and
Further, further north.
Express through Winchester Center.
On your bus, on your way to Anderson Ruben. Okay.
I mean, the good news is that the MBTA station that's been completed, that portion, you know, is, looks great for a lot of people that are very happy with it. So, you know, it felt like that that was the project that was never going to end. And so at least we're starting to see some progress. And they are, you know, investing in the, certainly in Winchester, but along the route as well. So, so that's, that, that is good news.
Yep.
Do we have any updates? I hate to ask this. Updates from them on the other end of the station?
No.
No. I think we asked Nathan that directly when he gave us the tour. We said, you know, end of the calendar year and the answer was, that's the plan. I think of something along the lines of, that's our story.
Right.
But nothing more specific. And I don't know when we would know. Maybe we can ask for an update in November. We usually want them in quarterly, so that would be, would have been around now. But November's going to be tough to fit them in, I think. But I think it would make sense, Beth, let's see if we can get them to a meeting in November, even if they have to go to Winchester High School. Because I'd hate to be December, you know, 27th realizing they want Laraway extended, they're not done. And what does that mean for parking?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay. Next up, ARPA funds. So we have several requests, funds to rescind, funds to potentially request. And we can take these up. Beth, do you want to just take it up in your memo and the sequence in which you have it?
Yeah, that's fine. Run through?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Let's, let's take up maybe Board of Health first and then Council on Aging and the playgrounds. I think we'll take them up in, in that order.
Are we taking the planning board one up as well?
We will take that up at the end. Yep.
Okay.
So just starting with the funds to be rescinded. So there was, there's about 40, almost $46,000 worth of funds to be rescinded from Health Department, previous votes for mental health crisis planning and then COVID-19 supplies and materials and professional services. And then we also have a very small amount of money, $102 to be rescinded related to the contract to update the VFA software. Most of that Health Department money is being revoted. So do you want me to, to just jump into the items that are the new requests?
Yes, please.
Or you want to do the vote to rescind first?
Let's vote to rescind first and then let's take up the specific Board of Health. They have two requests, but let's first take that vote to rescind.
Okay. So some of these are a little bit long. I move that the select board rescind the remaining balance of ARPA fund allocation for the Health Department for COVID supplies, materials and professional services and mental health crisis planning in the amount of $45,094.
Second.
Bill?
I think you did the number wrong.
Yeah.
$45,892.
No, I think you're, you're voting the VFA funds separately, right? Are there two motions?
So
Or just one?
I only had one here. What the heck?
Oh.
Oh, we didn't realize that.
Yes. So I don't, I don't have that one.
VFA software update. So the total is $45,892.94.
Okay. $45,892.
94.
All right. I move that the select board rescind the remaining balance of the ARPA fund allocation for the Health Department for COVID-19 supplies, materials, professional services and mental health crisis planning and VFA funds in the total amount of $45,892.94.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's not that we've returned some money. I think we're going to spend some money.
So there's a couple of memos in your packet. The first one is from the Health Department. This is the one we briefly reviewed last Thursday. Two requests under that. One was for motivational interviewing training for $75,000 and then a welcoming schools program for $16,000 in the total amount of $23,500. There's also a request from the Council on Aging. Philip Belts, the executive director, has been working with Stacy on that in the amount of $15,000. It's similar in nature, but a little bit different than the original community grant request from the Council on Aging. This work will, is really focused on items that can be completed by the end of the calendar year. So it's really focusing on holiday, improving nutrition over the holidays and then a few other items. The next piece is the, we saw and also another small piece of replacement, part, part replacement at the Ginfield Playground as well as installation of that we saw in the amount of $27,057. This was originally part of the Winchester Recreation, Friends of, Friends of Winchester Recreation Grant, and we were able to pull that out. And then DPW will be able to purchase that directly off the state bid list. One of the ones that we're working on still, we had talked at the, the last meeting with the WIPAC about the playground improvements at the school. So I have a meeting tomorrow morning with WIPAC folks as well as DPW and several representatives from the school department to talk about what things they might be looking to, to have included. And again, we'll do it as similarly as a direct vote to DPW. So I hope to be back to you on October 28th with that request. And then finally, we opened bids, as I mentioned, for the Leonard and McDonaldville Playground last week on Thursday. As you may recall, we, we received funding for that project in the amount of $930,000 at fall town meeting. The bids came in, the low bid for the project came in at $944,300. We've already spent some funds towards design and then also we have money encumbered for construction admin services. So we have just over $841,000 available to us from that original town meeting appropriation. So I'm requesting that the board allocate $133,000 in ARPA funds to go towards this project, which would allow us to immediately award the contract and be able to start that project. The, the, a few things, we reached out to the designer today to kind of see what changed from that original estimate. And then a few things that they, they noted first is the cost of rubber has increased significantly since that original bid, original cost estimate was put together. And then second, we did make a few design changes as a result of the community meeting that we had, which I think are, were excellent changes and recommendations, but it did result in some cost increases.
Were some of those design changes too? What, what were the design changes?
Yeah. So part of it was, we received some excellent feedback from the Disability Access Commission and some of the, some of the piece of equipment that they recommended, which were excellent additions, were just a little bit more expensive than what was originally budgeted for the project. So I think it, at the end of the day, it's the right solution and the right, and it's the right equipment to have included.
That's fantastic.
Yep.
So that's a lot. And I think we can take them up one at a time. But, so the very first, if that makes sense, right? I don't know, I think we want to maybe discuss the merits of all versus voting the slate. So the first is the Board of Health, Health Department, sorry, $23,500 motivational interviewing and the welcoming schools program. This was something that we saw last Thursday and I asked us to maybe push it off until tonight. So Board of Health did, there was somebody that they rescinded related to COVID. This is a new ask. What do people think about that? It's a one-time expense, obviously, and they can encumber that or contract for that certainly by the end of the calendar year, Beth, I assume?
Yeah, I think they're, I don't have exact dates, but I think they're trying to do this relatively quickly.
Sounds good to me.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, especially like how with the welcoming schools program, it's a train-the-trainer model. So we'll get hopefully even more out of it.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Nope. It makes sense.
Okay.
So this is $16,000 for the welcoming schools, right?
$23,500.
Twenty-three, five.
All right. So Stacy has it in two different motions.
Okay. We can take it in two motions.
Yeah, the motion was from last time and those are her suggestions.
Yes, yeah.
We'll, we'll use these too.
Absolutely.
All right. So I move the select board allocate $7,500 of ARPA funds to the Health Department for a motivational interviewing training program to train and enhance school councils' ability to assist students who are struggling with certain mental health challenges and strengthen skills that will promote their well-being.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And move that the select board allocate $16,000 of ARPA funds to the Health Department for welcoming schools program to create a more inclusive school environment for the LBGTQ plus community.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So next was the Council on Aging nutrition request. And Beth had described in her memo that this, instead of going through community grant, which was the procurement process, this would be a direct award to the Council on Aging for a variety of programs that we expect to be operated this calendar year or at least encumbered to be operated during calendar year 2025.
Just clarify, that was from Stacy.
Oh, it is from Stacy, not from you, Beth. Sorry. You're right. Your name's on there, but it was from Stacy. So were you involved in those conversations though with?
I was not involved directly in the conversations with Stacy and Philip, but I have, I'm aware of the program and the request. I think it's a good one.
And was it articulated in some of their original requests as well for ARPA that, that Anthea, you and Bill looked at?
Yeah. So Stacy explained this when she was in, that the original ARPA request from Council on Aging was both kind of not within the
Time
Year timeframe.
Yep.
And also it just, and then just thinking of how that funding looked, whether it was community grant or, or it's something else. So
Okay.
But I think, I think this, you know, makes sense and it sort of addresses what that initial concern was when we looked at the application of, you know, but had some great ideas and foresight of, of planning of what could take place in 2025, but sort of didn't meet how we wanted to use those community grant funds.
Yeah. So this is just kind of a shift in how it's awarded, but a similar intent, seems like.
Yeah. Props to Stacy for looking to see how to actually get this done.
Yes.
And, and delivering a very informative and succinct and helpful memo that unfolded behind all of this. She deserves a lot of accolades for that. As does DPW for the playground efforts and everything else.
We'll get to that next.
Okay.
But yes, I agree. Mike, any questions on the COA one?
No. I mean, I'm glad that we're able to bring this request forward. Food insecurity is a major issue for seniors and it's having meals and having these ways to do outreach, but also bring seniors to the janks and the Council on Aging programs is, is necessary for, for making those connections. So I'm glad that we're able to put this together and I appreciate Stacy moving this forward as well.
Okay. John?
I think it's great. Yeah. My only question was, this is sustainability of this. Like how do they institutionalize this for the next year? And maybe they didn't come up with a conversation, but I don't know if that's a request for funding from us or for someone else. Just think it's, it's great. So.
I don't know if we have a plan. I don't have an answer on that one.
No.
Yep, it's a fair question.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly something I can talk to Philip about when we get into the funding of the budget cycle. It's also something I think that you could use the cause of public accounts towards in the future if that's something that we weren't able to incorporate into our budget. It would be a good use of those funds.
I think, yeah, that was really what was going, that was to identify funding source going forward. So I move, oh, Michelle?
No.
Okay.
Always use allocate, allocate. That's what Stacy told me.
Yes. Yes. I only got to move for God's sakes.
My next verb was going to be allocate.
I move the select board allocate $15,000 to Council on Aging for, did I say ARPA funds? I move that the select board allocate $60,000 of ARPA funds to the Council of Aging for project nutritional, project nutritional enhancements for the holiday season, November through December 2024.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And then next on my list was the Recreation Department and some of the improvements at Ginfield. So this was a combination of, you know, DPW doing some of the grading and repairs in the bridge and also now it's really acquiring the equipment at purchasing at costs that we can get, that we could maybe get at a better cost than if it was just bought by a 501(c)(3). And these are the, I assume that these are exactly the pieces of equipment that, that want to be replaced or at least repaired or swapped out.
Yeah. It's my understanding that the DBW director has coordinated directly with Lauren, who's here in the audience tonight regarding the equipment.
I believe the we saw was on both the WIPAC
Yes.
And when Friends of Winchester Recreation application.
Remember seeing that? Yes.
We were making multiple, a lot of people happy by getting this done.
And just as a related shout out, the, the bridge railing has been repaired by DPW. So I appreciate that. Friends of WinRec was able to bring this forward and we're able to find a way to, to coordinate that with DPW and make sure that those projects could get addressed.
And Beth, if I'm doing the math like kind of close, between this Council on Aging that was kind of deferred and this additional playground improvement, we're pretty close to our $300,000 target for community investments, if not slightly over.
I didn't do that math, but I
But I think it's pretty close, right?
Probably close, yeah.
So that's, that's good too. Kind of gets us sort of goal and satisfying a few more requests, albeit through some slightly different means, which is great. Any other comments? Bill, Mike? I'll start with Bill.
Just what I said before, very happy to see the staff getting this to done.
Agreed.
Yeah. Likewise, I'm glad that we were able to accommodate these other requests and it is really helpful to have visibility from, from residents in different departments making these requests. So I think it was a good process for us to go through. And hopefully that's somewhat of what the Community Preservation Act will, will do for us in the future if it passes is have that more community engagement to say, we need these things in these places. And then DPW saying we can do it or not do it. And then we've got to go out and find the funding for it. Because there's a lot of, a lot of these things have been, you know, overlooked for, for so many years. And so I'm, I'm glad to see that in a way, this is kind of a mini CPA process that we've gone through. And I think it's been very successful. So.
And I just want to say, I think relative to what WIPAC might do in your meeting, and I know the school committee met with them around sort of design standards, we know we all, a couple of times ago, talked about playgrounds and playgrounds needing improvement and playgrounds needing, you know, just updates across the board. If there's some, potentially a nice collaboration between community needs, disability advocates, you know, needs and design, and how can we leverage DPW's buying power and, and the town's purchasing ability to accelerate it? I think it's a nice model as well.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to see it, you know, kind of elevated and happy to have Bob's creativity to get us to this. It should serve us well in some other playgrounds too, I think, which is great. John, any comments?
Yes. I would like to recognize Anthea Rady for two and a half years ago making playgrounds where the focus is, you know, seriously, like she really raised it. And think about how many playgrounds we've done as a result of that. Mike, good job with EverSource and the money from them.
Yep.
And so it's been a collective effort.
I think that's right.
It just keeps on going. So good move.
My family would just like to request that there be a community demolition of Leonard Playground. If that could be, I don't know if we can amend the
Hard hats and liability waivers.
I will sign away.
I'd like to take home a broken swing as a
First and no.
Fond memory.
I'll sign away my first and secondborn children if we can sledgehammer it. Every day I see that.
But John, I think great call out because I think it's shined a light on all of it.
We have beaten ball going through the schools and playgrounds. So I think it's on a good path.
I think that we see too, that it's, you know, ongoing investment, especially in our very, you know, heavily used playgrounds. And we'll certainly see more use, but you know, you know, graffiti and caution tape and, you know, you know, is, is, you know, not the way for us to
Do not enter signs.
So, right. So, so hopefully it's the start of a longer, you know, commitment to, you know, our recreational areas and playgrounds.
Yeah. And I think it's too, like when we earlier talked about ARPA, this funding is like for families with young children, playgrounds were the only way during COVID, after, after you could go to playgrounds. And they were the only way that you could, you know, create a network and, and community and, and just connect with people because you had to let them run around.
Yep.
Somehow and somewhere. So to be able to, you know, invest back into that with the ARPA funds, I guess, would be good.
That's great.
All right. So I move that we allocate $27,500 of So I move that we allocate $27,500 of upper funds for replacement of play equipment at Ginfield.
Twenty seven thousand.
Zero five seven.
Zero five seven.
Zero five seven. Oh, my gosh. Sorry. All right. Make, all right. Move that we allocate $27,000.057 of upper funds for the replacement of play equipment at Ginfield.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then the last is from Beth's memo with the McDonald and Leonard Field and the bid opening, so slightly bigger number, but I think we also spoke to some of those design changes. And we had, we had a town meeting appropriation, trying to maybe close the gap with ARPA funds. We have the, we have the bids in hand, so I'm happy to take this up tonight. I know we're, it's, it's a pretty big number. I'm also happy to kick it down the road for two weeks. But these are two other important playgrounds that aren't getting the love that Gin's getting right now, but these are getting a massive amount of rehab. And this just looks like the difference that we need between contingency, design changes and price. So what do people think about that?
Let's do it.
Let's do it. I'll start this time, I'll start with Mike and then I'll go around to Bill.
Yeah, it's fine. I mean, I, you know, it's, you know, kind of still my question on the, you know, what the contingency is and, you know, what if we, you know, come in under, we don't end up using that and then that, that money, then ultimately we would be, we would be using, we prioritize the ARPA.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We'll use all the ARPA money and then if we have any left, it would be.
It would reduce the town meeting.
It would reduce the capital. This is a capital stabilization. So it would be, like, we have an article this year to reappropriate funds from projects back to capital, so this would be a similar thing.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. Good point, though. We want to make sure we expend what we can.
Yeah.
Okay. And I know that this was sort of like, you know, Facebook had a little conversation about Leonard, where the tennis courts came along, like, hey, where's the love for the playground? And here we are. We're getting closer.
I walk, I walk past it every morning, so it sticks out a whole lot more to me. I know McDonald is also, you know, very rushed, so we talk, talk about playgrounds and like, I mean, it's, it's, Leonard is not usable, it's got boards in multiple places.
It's also heavily used, like.
It is heavily, it is used constantly. It is used every afternoon and evening by a variety of people. It's used in the morning by, you know, grandparents with their kids. Yeah.
Do we know that, so they're gonna, it'll have to be, you know, shut down for a period, right? Do we know what that construction is?
Yeah, so we haven't obviously had any of those conversations with the contractor yet, but we had just thrown around internally whether we wanted to have them start demo this fall or just ride it out over the winter. But knowing that we wouldn't, if we demoed it, you know, in two weeks, there would be nothing out there till the spring. So I, I'm not sure, we have talked to the contract about their schedule, but.
But when it is demoed, do we know sort of from, from demo, like, nothing to accessible equipment, is that six weeks, seven months?
I don't know.
Okay. So I think the sequence.
Longer than everybody would want.
You know, if we're doing them at the same time versus one at a time, right? Go to McDonald, go to Gin, but I think the messaging will be important because we'll want to have those sites secure and, and buttoned up at night, right? We don't want sort of new equipment that's half installed being used if it's not safe to be around it, so. Okay.
So Beth, does Chris Huntress, does he manage the projects for us? Does he do anything with this or did he just design the plans?
He was the designer for this and he is also, as I mentioned, we have him under contract for construction admin services, so he'll go out, he's not out there full time, but he's out there, you know, looking at things. They have weekly job meetings. And then typically there's a, like, a licensed person who has to come out and kind of like certify that everything's installed correctly at the end of the project.
So I'd like to say maybe it's for Roger, too. So given this is capital stabilization and now ARPA potentially closing the gap, I think that'll be good to sort of update Fall Town Meeting as well, that these two projects are that much closer to done. ARPA was, if we vote it, which I think we probably will, you know, we close, used to close the gap, but that, those are moving forward, which I think is great news, too.
So I'll just mention my back of the envelope math here. If, if, based on everything we approved tonight and if we approve that $133,000 and assuming we allocate the $900,000 towards Mystic Keet, we'll have about $138,000 of unallocated funds after tonight to have, to decide what we want to do with before the end of the year.
We, we did, I think, also get a memo from Red Lock Farm. Is that true?
Get a letter.
A letter.
Everybody did.
Right. Request, you know, for investment or partnership in them with Solar. So I don't know if we've received any more information or we've had the bid or anything like that.
No.
But probably a conversation to have and get in more information.
Sure. I'm happy to have that. If they're even in a position to do it sort of timely, but happy to reach back around. And then we do have a planning board request, which we'll take up after this, letter McDonald Fields.
And then I also just wanted to mention that the Health Department has kind of a pending request to, for money to go towards rodent control, which is something we've been working on to try to eliminate the use of poisons, at least on town property. So that will probably come back to you on the 28th, but I just wanted to flag that as a possibility as well.
You say roded?
Control.
Yes.
I thought you said rode.
No, sorry, rodent. Yes.
Poison.
Yeah.
Rats. Yes. Okay. Any additional discussion on Leonard and McDonald? Because I think we have to ready for motion.
Right. Move that we allocate $133,000 in upper funds for improvements at Leonard and McDonald Field Playgrounds.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Say that loudly.
Emphatic second. I thought if I said emphatic second, someone might second it first.
Happy for you and all of the neighbors. And all the, all the siblings of kids playing soccer on Saturdays and Sundays, it'll be great.
Parents are playing tennis or pickleball or whatnot.
All the things. So there is a memo from the Planning Board that came in October 3rd related to the MBTA 3A bylaw, that one thing that I guess was not done during that process was an additional assessment that they, we're going to have the Metropolitan Area Planning Council do another study to, to really recalculate how many affordable units could be built within any particular development. They want to do an analysis of the economic feasibility so that it's, it's feasible for developers, that they could have additional affordable units, because right now things are kind of rounded down versus rounded up. So if a unit had between one and 24 units, if 10% of the units are required to be affordable, 10% of six units is .6, which rounds down to zero units. So trying to align our calculation of affordable units by development size with our current zoning, Planning Board has asked for ARPA money to do an updated study. So I talked with the Planning Board Vice Chair last Friday and where if we don't do it in ARPA and there wasn't a warrant article put on to amend the Planning Board's budget this Fall Town Meeting, which could have been another vehicle, which is, there's always an article to amend current year budgets, that was, that path wasn't taken. This came in after the warrant closed. If it isn't voted in ARPA, it would require the Planning Board to add this study into their FY '26 budget and complete the work in the summer and then return with those updated kind of calculations during Fall Town Meeting. If there is an interim development that someone puts under the 3A zoning, there may be fewer affordable units developed, given the calculation. So what I had said to Brian was, given that ARPA sunsets at the end of the calendar year and given that we have Fall Town Meeting articles to adjust current year budgets and we have the reserve fund, that I would prefer the Planning Board go to the, since the Fall Town Meeting sort of path wasn't chosen, the warrant was closed, and that could have been one way to get the funding, probably from free cash. The reserve fund exists with the Finance Committee, they have, you know, what, $400,000 every year? And I don't know that they've really spent any so far this year. I asked that the Planning Board consider going to the two Finance Committee for this $15,000 or waiting for the spring budget season. I think to the extent that we have a limited amount of ARPA money left, things that might be operating expenses or ongoing sort of departmental needs, maybe should start getting back into the budget cycle that we have, because that's what we need to get back into the habit of doing.
A bit of rodent control?
Rodent control would also be.
Yeah.
An operating program that would probably continue beyond. So that's not my decision to make, it's the Board's decision to make, but I think, I want to be mindful of the fact that we've been in a habit and a good habit. We have money and we've invested a bunch now in community needs and playgrounds and infrastructure. If we have operating expenses like rodents that would continue year after year, or a study that potentially could have gotten on the, the warrant or could get into the spring budget cycle, maybe we want to get back in the habit of going through FinCom or the budget process and not have us be the stopgap, because we just won't be the stopgap in July, in January. We, we will stop being the stopgap. And reserve fund is one lever you can pull at any time during the fiscal year to get money for some unanticipated expenses. So those are my opening comments and I will stop.
I agree, Michelle, and to your point, you know, FinCom used to get a lot more of these requests and, you know, so, you know, I, I think it makes, makes sense for us to reinvigorate that, that process if we're, you know, not going to have, you know, ARPA after January to use and we're not going to have, you know, alternative funding sources for things like this. So it makes sense to me and, you know, I suppose if there is more of an urgency and FinCom says no, then there, you know, we can kind of go from there.
Yeah, that's, I discussed that with Ryan, that if, if FinCom rejected it and, and we think it's a good idea, we could always take it up again before the end of the calendar year. The, you know, it would likely go into their budget requests anyway, or it could even be a Spring Town Meeting warrant to adjust that current year budget or next year's budget, but, yeah. Because I think the study needs to be done, I just don't know that the urgency is, it has to be done now versus it could wait until the spring or it could go into next year's budget as just an ongoing need and probably a study that needs to be updated, or at least they need to make sure they normalize all of the math around affordable units, like on an ongoing basis with our housing production.
Yeah. And, you know, we've added in a system planner as well, the Planning Board and the Planning Department has been extremely busy over the past few years and so it, it's a good time for us to talk about increasing their ongoing budget for things like this in the future because it's, you know, not necessarily fair for major initiatives for them to be chasing around money. It's not necessarily what they typically do. So.
Yeah.
It's more of the kind of thing that we typically do. So, so, yeah, I'm happy with FinCom and then going Spring Town Meeting.
I think there is a little bit of a time issue here, though, from what I understand, because until we get this done, we don't get to do the rounding up, which is what we'd want to do. And even though it might be a small risk, there is a risk that somebody would come in and propose a MBTA 3A project and they would not have to round up if we don't get this study done. The likelihood of that happening might be slim, but it seems to me better to get it done, especially if we know we want to get it done and to get it done sooner rather than later, to minimize that risk as much as possible. If they can go to FinCom and see if the reserve funding is available, that's great. I don't know how long that process takes, though.
One meeting.
One meeting. So they could do that, we could, they could be back here at our next Select Board meeting?
I don't know when FinCom meets, but normally it's a letter to the FinCom Chair and then they vote it. So I don't know if they sequence it, get a letter and then take it up into the meeting after the letter is received, but it's, it's not a public hearing process, it's a, a request.
Sure. Yeah. I have no problem with trying to let that process play out, but then if that, if they can't obtain the funding through a reserve fund request, I'd rather see this not just get done sooner than later. And when I see the ARPA funds, because there is an expiration date on them, I like the idea of trying to normalize the budgeting process and, and expanding the Planning Board budget perhaps to identify the fact that they're taking on a larger workload. But I want to make sure we use the ARPA funding, too. And if there's nothing else that has an immediate demand or request for it, you know, six, $15,000 is not a huge amount and I'd rather get this ball rolling without any further delay. But I got no problem with at least seeing if they can get the funding from the reserve fund first, assuming that they can move on that quickly, and I bet they can.
Yeah, I would think FinCom will meet every night of town meeting like we will, right? They'll be in the room, so.
Yeah. I mean, I don't think I've seen the reserve fund used in my limited experience, so.
Exactly.
I don't know.
Because ARPA's been there.
They approved a $12,000 and change request from the library that they were, they're requesting to replenish the reserve fund to the $400,000 at Fall Town Meeting.
So $12,000 since July 1. Yeah.
I mean, I think, agree that if they can go to FinCom for that, there's a very clear memo explaining what they want to do, so I, I don't think we're asking them to perform a particularly new and large and heavy lift to make that request versus to kind of readdress their memo that articulates what this need is and why, you know, it's sort of somewhat time sensitive to, to start working on it now and get that squared away sooner rather than later.
Okay. So then that's what we'll do. I'll communicate that to the Chair and the Vice Chair. And then I'll communicate also to FinCom's Chair, I think, probably tomorrow, reach out to all, all three parties and we'll see how it plays out.
And that we have funding available, you know, if we, you know, need to make a decision or if we need to wait for Spring Town Meeting as well, so.
Yep. Okay. So I think we, we're going to wait on the last Board of Health around rodents, but I think my, my story will likely be the same, which is if it's an ongoing program of rodent maintenance, maybe we should build it into the budget or if it's a one-time expense, go to FinCom. Because it's kind, it's kind of John's sustainability piece with, with the Council on Aging. It's, we have the money and I get that, but we also have a process that we need to sort of get back in the habit of doing, so. Wait for that, that's preview for, for two weeks from now.
It's a nice way of easing people into it, though, so it's a good idea.
It's ripping off the Band-Aid slightly, but I think we need to rip off the Band-Aid. And we, and I will warn FinCom that we're sending people their way. But it's generally, it's these kinds of things that, you know, I mean, John was on FinCom with me. It's, it's $20,000, it's $40,000, it's mid-year, unanticipated mid-year, we didn't get this in, that's what it's there for. And we've had ARPA and they've sent some people back our way, but I think we, we just won't and I would just like us to change and move, shift, just shift our behavior and expectations. There, it's a, it's a very valid request, absolutely. Okay. So I think, Beth, there's nothing else in ARPA, right, that?
Not for tonight.
Not in the wings? Okay. So the next up is, and we're almost through our agenda, which is wild.
The right law, then?
Yep.
We'll wait for that.
Well, I'm, I'm going to reach out and Mike and I will reach out and see if there's detail around, oh, the van we voted last Thursday. Sorry. This is solar panels and if they had a vendor and a contract and a price and things and like the timeliness piece, we'll try to have an update within two weeks on that. Okay. So the next up is this handout at table for Select Board articles at Fall Town Meeting. If we're prepared to vote positions tonight, we can. What I thought we would do is at least go through assignments of who wants to speak to what. So if that makes sense.
Take Article 32. It's like in sports raft, right?
You want Mystic School? You've got it. I mean, starting from the bottom, John Fallon, Article 32.
It's the last night and we'd be beaten down.
Making it difficult for me to catch up and keep track, but thanks. Okay. Article one, I will do. The next, 164 Street.
Let me take that.[1707.92]
Let me take that.
Next, Article 9, Energy Code?
I should probably take that one.
Okay. Anthea, did you get your eye on anything?
There's no water in sewer here.
Going down the list, Article 13. Beth, do we think that Capitol?
I think Capitol is presenting that, and I, Bill, I don't know, since that Article 9 is cosponsored, I'm not sure. You'll have to work with the Climate Advisory Committee to see if-
If you're going to split your time, kind of thing?
They're planning to be the lead, or how you guys want to coordinate that.
I'll take every chance to liaise or come through it that I can.
Okay. So, there is no water in sewer, to your point. So, Article 13, maybe we just leave that as a hold if we hear from Capitol? Okay. Then I'm happy to do that one, because I do love the library windows. Okay, the next up, then, with our name next to it is 18, High School Gym Floor.
I'm going to take that out, but I suspect that's handled by EFPDC overwhelmingly.
So, do we want to make that expectation, Anthea, that we would like them to take the lead on that, and that you're there to provide recommendation?
Yeah, I think that-
Kristin knows the thing inside, no?
Yeah.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah.
I don't think there's going to be a lot of leftover speaking time on that.
Or else apart.
I'll let someone else fall on the health insurance stabilization.
I was thinking I would, I was thinking I would do that one. Unless Mike or John or anybody else wants to arm wrestle me, but I thought I would maybe fall. That's Article 25. Okay. And then, Beth, we think 33, we don't, we don't have any-
We have no motions.
No motions on that. Okay. Not that really have a presentation, that's pretty much, that would be consent agenda probably anyway, but right now there's no motions?
They're not typically consent, but, yeah, I haven't seen anything.
So, that's just a, Patty, that's just a blank. If something, I guess, wanders in, we'll need someone to speak to it. We'll put Bitcoin, maybe? Okay. Do we want to vote positions tonight, or we want to just go into the election warrant, which is a procedural thing that we have to do?
Can we talk about the Mystic?
Yes. Thank you, Beth, for reminding me of that one. That is in our packet, thanks to Patty. So, on Thursday, we talked about the Mystic School heat and some additional potential free cash usage for the kind of core 1950 system, and then additional funding for the annex. And we did not vote that motion on Thursday. I guess I think we didn't, we just didn't want to round up the numbers or something, right? So, we want to vote it tonight.
So, I gave you two options for your consideration. The first is a single motion. So, just to remind everybody where we are, that project is currently out to bid. We got the cost estimates for the 95% plan, so that's the best number we currently have, but the bid is scheduled to be open on November 7. So, we will have actual numbers. This is the second to last article at town meeting, so we're in the rare case where we have actual bid numbers. So, whatever number we plug in here now, I would consider it a placeholder, and when we have those real bid numbers, we will provide a revised motion to town meeting based on the actual bid. So, just to remind everybody, the cost estimate, the base bid was $950,000. That includes a 15% contingency. That is just for the work within the 1920s-era building. Alternate 1 pulls out the work in the 1950s-era building, that cost estimate was $330,000. Then we have an additional estimated cost of $35,000 for the transformer. We have the work order in to Eversource for that, but we don't have a price yet. We don't have that until they have it engineered, so we're putting that $35,000 in as a placeholder. And then Weston Sampson has provided us a proposal for a construction admin fee at $38,000. So, the total project cost, based on those estimates, is $1,353,000. As we talked about, we have set aside $900,000 in ARPA money for that, so the difference being a cost of $453,000, should we take that alternate. So, I provided one motion that, again, that $453 is just a placeholder, one motion. We can adjust that. You can decide, you know, when the prices come in on November 7, we'll be meeting that evening. You could decide at that night that you don't want to take out alternate 1. We can adjust that number. Or, I think what you talked about on Thursday is to break it into two motions, one which would be for the base bid, plus the CA services, plus the transformer, and have a second motion for alternate 1. My recommendation would be to stay with the single motion approach and have the board make the decision about whether you want to accept the alternate. Town meeting members can always, at the floor of town meeting, you know, revise that number if there was somebody who felt differently, but-
Or ask us, I guess, to carve it out, right? How much of this money is going to which project? But one motion that we can adjust, ideally down, but who knows, maybe up, on the floor of town meeting, is maybe cleaner.
What is the rationale behind your recommendation?
Well, I think it's, I think it might be confusing to bring it to town meeting with two options. I don't think town meeting has the benefit of the 12 months of discussion that we've had and understanding the intricacies of the projects, and I think ultimately it's a decision for staff and the select board and school committee to make as to whether or not we want to accept that alternate. You know, if that alternate comes in at $50,000, then my feeling is like, we do it, right? If it comes in at $500,000, then it's like, no, we're not, we're not going to spend the additional money. So, I think it's going to kind of be a judgment call in terms of where it comes in with the overall budget, and how much total the project comes in at. And my recommendation is that that be a select board decision that, before it goes to town meeting with that number.
And I agree with you in that it makes sense that, you know, really, awarding contracts is, comes down to staff, so, you know, putting it as two motions, kind of, sort of shifting that power for the second part away to town meeting, that having it as a single motion makes sense.
I'm more in favor of option 2, and because I am certain that we will get at least one, and maybe more, questions about the 1920s system versus the 1950s system. And I just, and I have enough confidence that we put two pictures up there of the two floors of the building, one's in, one's in red, one's in yellow, whatever comes, 20 and 50s. Here's why we're recommending we do both. But here's, because if on the floor, you've got to unwind it and make that presentation and explain it, then it's, then it could be, it could be a disaster, because it's just going to generate a lot more questions. So, I'm like, let's just go full disclosure. This is how this works, and this is why we're recommending this, because I feel confident that we should recommend doing both parts, unless it comes out to be like $600,000 or some kind of crazy number for the 1950s part. So, that's why I'm a motion, option 2 guy.
And you're speaking to it on the floor of town meeting?
Yes, I am. So, I'm like, how do I feel most comfortable presenting it? And I'm like, option 2, because I go back to the high school, well, we need only $130 million, and I'm like, no, you don't. You need $10 million for the aqueduct, you're just not telling us that. And I thought that was not right. So, now, I said, trust is the most important thing to me. I want people to trust what I say, and so that's why I want to look at that way.
So, you like option 2 with the two motions?
Yes.
Okay.
Anthea, I know what your point is, like, you know, having town meeting get involved in project management, but it's also the money, so.
Yeah, no, it just, I don't think option 1 precludes you from explaining in that way, how we have these two different systems, and we want to award in two different pieces. I just, you know, our staff, like, it's, our staff has this expertise of having been, you know, with Weston Sampson and looking at all of this, and, you know, I'd hate to have, that's, you know, Beth is saying, oh, it's $50,000, we should, you know, go ahead and award it, and versus, you know, a larger amount just feels like it gets into sort of dicey territory.
Yes, I agree, but I think you'll have some people get up and say, well, there's heat pumps over there, there's other things over there, that place isn't really cold, why are we doing this? And then all of a sudden, it just gets obfuscated, and then you're just like, wow, how did I end up in this disaster? And then I look at myself, and so I put myself here.
Yeah, I don't envy you presenting that.
Yeah. You can't change your mind either.
I'm sorry.
You just get right out of the gates.
I'm glad you said that, I'm sick on November 21st.
Right out of the gate. Yeah. I mean, John, I would take this one off your hands if you wanted, if that, because I do care a lot about this, and I'm up in the air between the two options, which one I think makes the most sense, because thinking about it just procedurally, and how town meeting operates, if it is inevitable, if we are taking it as inevitable that somebody might stand up and try to carve out the, the add alt from the motion, you know, what's the easiest way of handling that? Is it having to deal with an amendment on the fly, or is it better to get ahead of it by having two motions? At the same time, that has to be counterveiled against, what's this easier, stronger, more persuasive sell? If this is something we really want to do, having it all in one motion, I think, has a more persuasive aspect to it.
Okay.
I'll just say, mostly because we're never in the position to have true bid costs when we're at town meeting. We've never had an instance at town meeting where we've given them the option about whether or not to accept an alternate.
Mm-hmm. True. That is true.
We, I mean, we're always basing all of our capital estimate, our capital request are based on estimated costs. This is the only case, just the way the timing is going to play out, that we'll have a real number.
I mean, I'm, go ahead, Mike, and then I'll go last.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I agree with John, and he's the one that's presenting it, and if it's a disclosure, you know, question, that's what mine was, to break them out, because this was the question that we had in our joint meeting with the school committee, right? So, you know, I think we need to represent a little bit of what their recommendations were, at least some of them, to kind of break this out in pieces, and putting my town meeting member hat on, and not having any visibility, I'd actually appreciate that, being broken out that way, and seeing that one is an alternate, one is the main project, because it was made an ad alternate for a reason, you know, and so, and a lot of times with these projects, we, you know, we have a contingency that, that we don't end up needing, and we can reach that ad alternate, and so that's how a lot of these things end up working, is if we, but, you know, just to get the main project prioritized. So, I mean, that would be, that would be my sense.
Yeah. The one other comment I want to make is I fear that if we break it out, we are almost disadvantaging motion number 2, because there'll be people who think, well, we've already put, you know, I don't want to spend any more money, I don't like spending money, we got to save all of our money, schools are not worth any money. I'm giving them a little bit by giving them motion 1, and I feel fine with that, because I'm going to vote no on motion 2. And I worry that by splitting it up, if we want to get this full project done, we are putting a thumb on the scale and disadvantaging motion 2 from ever passing. And if we are going to, if, I think Beth makes a really good point, that if we have solid numbers before this is actually going up, before town meeting, you know, it is kind of our responsibility as a select board to decide what it is we think needs to be done.
Well, we can still make the recommendation, but it's town meeting's money. It's not my money.
Yeah. Yep, but, so I'm going to, I'm going to say, and if I wind up breaking the tie, that's fine. I'm in favor of a single motion, because nothing precludes us, John, from saying, of this number, this is for this, and this is for that.
Yeah.
And I don't know why we wouldn't say that in town meeting, right?
Sold.
That was easy, but I was going to, okay, I just figured I'd go last, right? But that's my sense. Nothing precludes us from describing the elements of cost, and the, and pictures, and what's doing what. And we've just got $75,000 to replace windows, like, we're trying to make the heat better where it's broken, you know, in the annex and the other places. We're trying to tighten up that infrastructure. And it's, I think it's an all-in kind of improvement to try to make it just better, energy-efficient space. So, that's my, that's my vote. Not that we're taking a vote just yet, but that's where, that's where I'm going.
Did we have the, a decision on kind of the emergency plan, what happens if tomorrow it's, you know?
Yeah, I'm, like I said, I think at the last meeting, we're still scheduling a meeting with Nick and the school department to talk about what our options might be for that.
So, it's, you know, getting colder, and, you know, this project's not going to be done soon, so we've been talking about this emergency plan for a year, and so I, you know, I have some anxiety around the fact that we, we don't have a plan yet, and we haven't, you know, had this meeting, so I, you know, is it, is the meeting, I mean, and I'd like to attend, I mean, if that's, that's possible, so I don't know when it's, when it's on the books. I know it's busy over the next couple of weeks, but it would be helpful to know. So.
Probably to take those two things as independent, but they are related, right? Understand what the plan is if the heat fails, because we're not going to have, we'll vote on November 14th and have repairs on January 2.
Yeah, I mean, and ultimately, this solution that we're investing in, you know, with the town meeting warrant article here, and what we've invested, it's not solving the problem, right? So, it's, there's, it's, you know, making a piece of it more predictable, I think, right? So, you know, it's part, it's part of that conversation as well, that, you know, we, we need to have a plan in place if there's kids in the building and it's cold.
Right.
I mean, seems to me like that's, you know, and it probably needs to be at a school building, you know, that is accessible and, you know, has classrooms and things like that, so I, I-
I think it'll be important, so thanks for bringing it up again, Mike, because I think it'll be important for John's presentation to have that answer if it comes up.
Nick, can you please answer this question?
But you're, Mike, you're right.
It's, the time's now, and it's long enough to, to talk about it and say, yeah, we have to do that. No, we need it like now.
Yep.
Okay. Any other debate on our, split it out, keep it whole. Someone wants to make a motion in one direction or another, I suppose you can.
A motion on the motion?
Yeah, there you go.
Move to go forward with option 1, the single motion for Article-
32?
32.
Second?
Any additional discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No for me.
No for Mike. Were you a yes, John?
Yes.
Okay, 4 and 1. Okay. And now the election warrant. Thank you, Beth, for bringing that one back, because I completely jumped over. The election warrant, flying right in with a motion. We need to approve the motion and notify our constables that we're having an election, and time and the place, and all of the things. So, this is just a procedural exercise we go through, but we have to take a vote?
I move that the select board move to officially accept and sign the state election warrant to be held on Tuesday, November 5, 2024, at the Winchester High School gymnasium, as stated in the warrant, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. And then, the last word is some committee updates. I think, Mike, you kind of gave some updates on general CPA awareness. The CPA Advisory Committee has been meeting every other week, working on policies and procedures. Beth, John, and I are, I think, settled on a meeting to talk with schools about school buildings. We have a date, I was communicating with the school committee chair to try to make sure that's an in-person meeting, so as recently as 5 o'clock, I think we're working on. Does that day still work to be in person? And that's Mystic and Parkhurst and, you know, Lincoln Flatwork and all the things, with the school committee chair, with superintendent, with John and myself. So, that hopefully is happening next week. Hopefully, it will happen in October, but they gave us a date for next week. So, some additional kind of Capitol-related updates that I would share, and I would just turn it over. Anybody else have updates for the group on outside meetings or outside work that we're doing? Now would be your time.
You'll hear from the Fields Committee at the next meeting.
There you go. Okay, so then, in two weeks, we'll have new tile fields. We're going to have the planning board in on housing production in December, Beth, is that right?
Yeah, I think we're going to try to have a joint meeting to approve that plan, so we can submit it to the state for approval.
Okay. And then the last piece is, before we get to consent agenda, which I always like to blow right by.
Wait, before we go off?
Nope, we're not going, okay, go ahead.
Just feedback on the evaluation.
Yes. Please get that to Bill, because I'm sure I owe you that. Totally the appropriate time.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
That's, that's it.
Can you send it out electronically again?
I'm happy to. If I have it in Word, I'll send it in Word, so people can redline whatever comments they want to make.
Okay. Thank you. And thanks for asking that out loud.
And I think I have to send that to Patty to send to everybody.
Yes, yes.
Do you want me to find mine and then you send, or do you want?
If you have it in Word.
Yeah, one way or the other. Patty, if you beat me to it, hooray. Otherwise, I'll send it to you in the morning.
The last, so the last thing before consent was December meeting. So, we talk about how November is just, you know, full of holidays and town meeting, so.
My apologies.
That's, that's okay. So, we know we're going to have town meeting on the 7th, the 14th, the 18th, likely the 21st. We are probably going to have a meeting on the 25th for, what is it again? A hearing on circuit breaker, senior circuit breaker?
No, it's a tax classification hearing on the 25th.
Tax classification hearing on the 25th, which would probably be in-person, 7:30, but maybe the only order of business is a public hearing on tax classification. Then- Then?
So we're having a, a, a separate meeting on that?
I think so.
So I think we, we're required to have a hearing. Patty's been coordinating with Dan McGarrel, the assessor on
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's usually like non-controversial, right? It's like ten minutes.
It's just the timing of it.
It has to happen in November?
When it happens with the tax report.
Yeah.
Is the problem.
Yeah, then we can't do it in one of our meetings before town meeting.
But as I was going to ask you, Ken, has it ever been done before town meeting?
This year?
Not while I was
Yeah, exactly.
Or like, would we post it at the high school then?
We've done, we've done, yeah, we've done, we've held public hearings, you know, at the high school before. We've, you know, had rooms in it. And actually, it, maybe that if town meeting members are there anyway, they may be more inclined to come to a tax classification hearing than coming in on a night specifically for
Okay.
That, don't laugh, Michelle, I saw that.
I did laugh.
But, but yeah.
All right, so maybe not the twenty-fifth. Let's, let's see what we can do for Dan in November. And if he's available.
I think we'd have to do it the eighteenth.
The eighteenth.
Eighteenth, because the twenty-first is, I'm being optimistic, a maybe.
Right. And depending on other business, if we have positions to vote, whether we start that, you know, earlier, but we need to have it be really separate before we get into all of our other file town meeting business. So let's see what Dan's got available. So, okay, twenty-fifth is iffy. Thank you, Mike, for that. Then December sixteenth, I think we need to have a meeting on circuit breaker? Is that right?
Circuit breaker's on the twenty-eighth.
October twenty.
Sixteenth is all the licenses and everything.
Right, business licenses, sign your life away. So we are probably going to then try to fit another meeting in on December second, but we know we need to meet on the sixteenth. And then if there's any ARPA cleanup, keep us apprised of your vacation plans around the new year. Yeah, if you're gonna, well, yes.
December thirtieth.
Right.
That can be virtual, right?
That would, that would be in Zoom. The sixteenth will be licenses and then likely December second. So if we can kind of punt that November twenty-fifth hearing to a night of town meeting, I think we should maybe bookmark December second, December sixteenth. And then, and as needed, maybe a Zoom the last week. So I just wanted to get, I know that it's only October fifteenth, but we wanted to get that out there because we're just going to be flying through November. And wanted to get those dates out for you all.
Are we going to try to arrange another summit?
Summit?
Yeah.
Yes, we talked about that. We were thinking maybe a, well, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter the, the day of the week, but in our meeting with schools next week, if we can, you know, understand where FinCom and schools are with budget in terms of budget growth, maybe have a meeting in November, which we try to find the time, a meeting in December, which could be on Zoom, and then have the budget summit that we usually do in January. I think we try to usually the first or second Friday in January. But at least try to have one conversation in December, probably in Zoom, invite FinCom, invite the schools, and then we'll see where they are in their own negotiation if those subcommittees have met. So we haven't picked a date for that yet, but we are trying to fit it in, Bill. Yes. And if we haven't, if the school committee hasn't started some of that conversation with FinCom Subcommittee on Education, if there's something to talk about in November on their process and where they are, I think we'll try to get that update. And otherwise, we'll try to have a meeting in December as well. Sort of leading into Beth's Town Manager Budget and what, any guidelines that we want to give, growth targets, other kinds of things.
And I'm not sure if we've had the conversation about setting up the State of the Town Committee.
We have not.
Or, you know, but it's probably time. I think the operating budget's going to be running on fumes soon-ish. And so I think we benefited with the last general override in twenty nineteen by having really a long lead time to communicate with residents what we're doing, why, and for us to identify what the need is. I think, you know, we thought it was, you know, especially as we're going into contract negotiations again, you know, it's, there, there's going to be a lot of pressure, I think, on the operating budget.
Over the next couple of years.
Over the next couple of years.
Yeah.
Brings a point, Mike. Is, is the teacher's contract up?
Yes.
Yeah, they're in the same cycle as we are.
Yes. That might be a good topic for December, right? If nothing else.
Yep.
Okay. Someone do that now? Or adjourn?
Consent agenda.
Let's do consent agenda, okay. All right, so that's sort of December budgety discussions, maybe not call it a summit, but maybe a budget update preliminary, maybe State of the, State of the Town. And then the sixteenth, and then likely the second of December. So we'll try to get all those finalized, but wanted to just give you the heads up because it's going to be very busy. It's going to be here before we know it. All right, so maybe if we can do then consent, consent agenda, and then I think we're going to move back into exec session for a minute, but let's do consent agenda.
All right, and do that we approve the consent agenda as printed?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now we're going to ask our guests maybe to exit. We're going to move back into executive session. And John, if you could do so.
I move that we move into executive this session. To discuss Ace of Fletch Fund.
Is that the second? Okay.
We, we solve a
Yep.